This is a very informal meeting. There's going to be a lot of information that's going to be shared. I have to tell you, we have one thing in common. I have one thing in common with the two, three, these three people up here. Former Board of Education member, former Board of Education, former Board of Education, current Board of Education member.
All paid well. All paid very well.
And again, they all paid excellent. As I think, I think I'm the only person in the district that did get a raise this year. It's still zero. So, with no further ado, we really want to encourage your questions. It may be difficult to hear from the back of the room without a microphone, so if you have questions, I encourage you to come up and just ask them. And if our presenter is listening, not everybody will be able to hear that question, so if you can kind of restate that question when there are questions, so everybody will be on the same page. And that's very important to us. So, without further ado, I'm just going to turn it over and let our three guests here introduce themselves, and we're going to get right started right now, because I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Besides, I'm hungry.
Rob, thank you so much. My name is Mania Barca. I am the Chair of the Budget Committee, and I represent Jackson County's first District Industry, which just so happens to be across the street, down the hill ridge to state line, all the way north to the river. I dug over a little bit to the eastern part to pick up a portion of the northeast part of Kansas City and all of the west east bottoms. So basically, it's an upside-down hill. So, that is who I am and what I represent, and I will gladly introduce our two legislators and legislators here as well. They're both at-large. Our wonderful colleague here, Donna Payton. And Donna, if you want to introduce yourself and share your district and maybe a pretty good role as well.
Thank you so much. My name is Donna Payton. I represent Second District at Large, which means that I represent all of Jackson County. The Second District, because I live in the Second District. I am a former school board member. I am very fortunate to have been the admin for Dr. Cardow many years ago. So I know the jewel that the Central School District has, and I am very happy to be, I'm very happy that you took the time out of your busy schedules to be here, to ask the questions, to find out more about SB 190, the commitment, the equal commitment, and Dr. Cardow is going to use that to seniors and children. Thank you so much.
And my colleague, Legislature Mania.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Governor Marshall. I am kind of a legislative legislator this year. I represent the Third District that already faces the impact of the entire county. I just happen to live in the District. I was on the East Summit Board of Education, and before I turn it back over to the Budget Committee, I just wanted to let everyone know that we're here because we believe in sharing information as much as we believe in receiving information. And I think it goes without saying that, you know, when we talk about providing tax relief where we need it, there are some significant impacts. And so we're making sure that we are well aware of what those impacts are before we go down this path of the financial for everyone, so that we can best prepare to everyone's health and welfare.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Dr. Cardow and her team. I understand we have another superintendent here as well from the summit. Dr. Southwood is representing kind of a conglomerate of our local school districts, and there may be others that I'm missing. Again, my name is Mania Barca. I would be remiss in saying that I too serve on the school board. I was on the Kansas City Public School Board the last three years as a treasurer of one of the larger taxing jurisdictions in Jackson County. With us is also Rebecca Nesta Hogan, my teammate in the legislative office. She'll be walking around handing you a microphone as we try and hear some public testimony from you all. I want to share a couple of things in our during this process. Dr. Southwood and I had a conversation over today where he reminded me that 92,000 kids are within the population of Jackson County. And I would be remiss if I didn't count how many school districts. Dr. Southwood? Twelve school districts in total. And so we have a lot of voices at the table as we think about at least our taxing jurisdictions in public education. We also have several other taxing jurisdictions to consider in this conversation. And as we compare that data, just looking at raw census numbers, we have about 115,000 seniors over 65 within Jackson County. So what happens to one population is nearly equal to the impact of the other. And so, as my colleague had suggested, it is not without some impact that we look at reducing possibility of impact to seniors here. So we want to keep that in mind, and since we all did come from school boards, as well as our chairman, Ron Deef, and the Mills School Board, we have a unique interest in protecting and sheltering resources for our school districts because they are so precious. And I think this week's heat has already impacted several districts and a need and call for renewed focus on infrastructure to make sure that our future generations have equal access to opportunities of equal. So in terms of the process for tonight, we will officially open the Budget Committee. Both Vice Chair Marshall and myself said on the Budget Committee we're going to ask our friend, Donna Payton, to step in as well, so that we have it going to listen to your testimony. We will provide a little bit of background about kind of the discussion and where the legislation is going in that process, but otherwise we will be just opening it up for public testimony. The only thing that we really have done thus far in these public hearing situations is clarify if there's information that's inaccurate, if testified or proven, but we try not to engage in any of the strain, which is really for you all and for us to hear the thoughts and opinions of everybody. So please be kind and mindful of impact, knowing this is a very challenging issue to make. I think all three of us have made very direct statements about the challenging process that our executive and assessor have led for the assessment process in itself. I know that all of us, I think even as of Monday, have called out a lot of the challenges and the lack of clarity and transparency in this process. That's trying to create more transparency by coming out into the community and creating these opportunities as well. So, in terms of processes, the way that the taxes are being lifted now on the back of your notices, you have a breakdown based upon your geographic location of how your bill is dispersed, how your tax dollars are dispersed. That varies, and so that is something that I recommend, if you haven't done already, you take a look at. Seven percent is basically what the county receives for the different funds that we have on processes. So it's not a complete impact of us, the county, receiving all of the revenue. And I will say, school districts rightfully so, are probably receiving the most and our least tax dollars. Then it breaks out into community college and fire districts and several other different things that may be within the county area. So that's kind of the bill itself and how the funds go back. As options for us to have impact so far on this process, SB 190 is the only piece of legislation the state allows for counties to engage with, to offer some form of relief. I will go out and say, and it is between my colleagues, that it is an imperfect piece of legislation, but it is currently the only relief that is offered within our court. We are required by state statute to collect 90% value, which hasn't always been collected. However, it is being enforced in the last six years or two cycles, and so that is why you're seeing the dramatic increases. The executive has a lot of control in this situation by which you have the power of that office that includes the appointment of the Assessment Department and the appointment of the Board of Equalization. Appeals are predominantly closed at this point, although we found out Monday through really the media that for some reason you have a circumstanced that you could not apply by the past deadline, and you can't apply up to September 7th under the estheticary direct extenuating circumstance. That makes it very challenging for folks with taxing jurisdictions to start predicting what their revenues will be so they can vote for the four years. And so I have tried to wield in my power to make it as transparent as possible. I believe we have a deadline, is it September 1st, I think, where we have to actually submit our levies that we're going to set for which then grows the school districts in a new array of having to budget within a month or adjust based upon their situations to set their own levies. And in some situations, that may mean one or two meetings with very little background information. And I will tell you firsthand as the former treasurer of the school district, we had one meeting in less than two weeks to understand and compute what that impact would look like on taxing jurisdictions. We acknowledge that, we realize the challenge there, and want to make sure that we are doing the best we can to not narrow the impact on children and other folks in the community. So in terms of the legislation itself, it's been introduced. We have a legal committee. Now we're just waiting for, I'm sorry, we help in the committee. We are waiting for this public hearing process to go through so that we can vote it out of committee and vote it to the legislature as a whole, for which it could happen in the same day whereas the legislative. The statute actually doesn't go into effect until August 18th, so kind of acting preemptively is by virtue not really doing anything more in the future. There is some discussion and disagreement on the realities of whether or not this is going to affect this taxing year to have an impact on this bill, or if it must be impacted in the next cycle. Some of the parameters of SB 190 are specific to holding your assessed value at your social security eligibility, which again, other questions there, to the 23 rate. So whatever your assessed value is in this year, that is where it will be frozen at. So anything else that the other discussions are having to see from one person right now, so percentage changes, percentage freezes, none of that is issue. SB 190 only relates to freezing your taxes at the 23 level as is for the remainder of your life or time in that. So those are some of the processes. I think that kind of outlines a lot of where we're at right now in discussion. I think it is very clear that the majority of the legislature is in support of this, but because of some of the efforts of Dr. Southwood and several superintendents, their advocacy to have some engagement opportunity here, and call from secrets saying they want to testify on this, we've made these situations available for public comment. So, not to belabor anymore, I think I will pause there unless my colleague has any comment. We'll open up the legislative meeting officially.
There is just one comment, because I want to make sure that you know how hard we're working for you. And it was the effort of the Budget Committee and the legislature that made it possible to extend, when we were told that wouldn't be possible, to extend the deadline for appeals. And so that is what pushed everything back, and that's why we will not have that information out until September 1st. And as Legislature Barca mentioned, we understand the impact, but we wanted to make sure that we gave the citizenry as much of an opportunity as possible to appeal when the system itself was making it very difficult to do so.
Let's see, because you want to say the other ones. Well, just to clarify here, it looks like we have a lot of people in attendance, but I don't know that anyone has said they want to publicly testify. So, I guess we can subject ourselves to questioning. I will open my, well, first let's open the legislative meeting itself, because I think we can formalize some of this process. So it is now 5:46. We'll take note that we'll start the legislative, the legislative meeting for the Budget Committee. My name is Mania Barca. I am the Chair of the Budget Committee. With us, we have the committee, Lieutenant Vice Chair Marshall, and we will ask Legislature Payton to step in for us as our third committee member. So before us is a public hearing on SB 190 legislation. For those who have not received a copy, I think Rebecca is passing some around. The legislation is actually there in its form as the introductory introduction, as well as this piece of legislation having the clause that says SB 190 will be implemented by virtue of process this year. So that is something that is within the legislation as well. And it would be subject to the executive action if it's authorized by the body in a majority vote. He may have still the opportunity to veto that if he so chooses, of which then the legislature has the opportunity to override, but it would still be his department's that would actually implement the process to argue for justice. Anyone want to publicly testify? Okay. Rebecca is going to take the microphone over there. All right, perfect.
My name is Sharon Brown, and this is my husband Luther. Actually, we're just wanting to welcome you. We sent a bill, 190. I retired from School District Center, in fact, and I'm under the Windfall Elimination Provision Act. So will that affect me being able to benefit from Senate Bill 190?
So the Windfall, I'm guessing this is a Hancock Committee, I'm unfamiliar with this Windfall.
Social Security has a Windfall provision, which would give another retirement, which would give us your social security.
I see, okay. So I think it's really about qualification when it comes to being able to receive the benefits of SB 190. And I think this is part of the challenge with the legislation itself, is that it is not clear that if you have met an age marker, that then those, even though they're not eligible to receive social security, may receive the impact of what we're trying to accomplish. That is something that I know a colleague of ours has brought up. I think it has to go to the state for perfection in that situation. I don't know, the interpretation will have to come probably from the legal department of our county. It has been a challenge, and there is no clear answer from this. I think from our end, we'd rather pass something that would impact someone versus no one. And so that's where we're at at this point, knowing full well that I think even several of us have advocated for changes from the state that would impact in that way. So not yet, I think, is really the answer unfortunately that I have to give to you. And I do want to acknowledge that our chairman has walked in the room and is trying to hide in the back. Chairman Ron Deef in the legislature. Welcome, Sarah. Yeah, Legislature Payton.
And I might add, if you, for instance, are not receiving social security and your spouse is, there is a provision that if the spouse is receiving social security benefits, you are not.
Oh, thank you.
Under how SB 190 is currently written.
All right. Thank you. And the second question is, so with our real estate taxes, say I, we have appeal, and this is given to someone else, not you. We did win our appeal, but my sister did appeal and settled. She wasn't happy, but settled for an amount that's far higher than she feels she should be. So would she have to be locked in? She is retired on social security. So would she have to be locked in at that higher amount?
Yeah, it is the rate at 23. And so if that is the, I don't know when she has settled in that situation. I think it was 10 days if they have to go back and adjust that and cannot agree with the settlement after all, and maybe take it to the full Board of Equalization for a question. But it is the 23 rate, and so that is another challenge in the legislation. My, there were 100, over 150 pieces of legislation introduced in the general legislature, this is the state government in Jefferson City, and one piece came out that was perfected within, I think, two weeks' process. So this is why it is imperfect, is because it was rushed.
So last part, if so, then I don't know how we would apply for it in Senate Bill 190. I guess that would be a non for us. Okay, but then if she decides and she applies for it this year, she's not happy with where her taxes are, can she get off of that? Might next year?
Well, applying for the tax code is optional. You don't have to if she's not happy with the 2023 rate. But I will say, you know, depending on when she agreed to that, the results of the appeal, there may still be an opportunity for, and I'm saying may because I don't know the exact date. I checked, I spoke with you.
You did.
Okay.
So yeah, she is within my five days.
So she still may have a window to appeal to the State Tax Commission, which will then give her another opportunity to have her 2023 rate looked at and then have that appeal overturned. So she should still be in that, those dates line up, like I say, she should still be in that window to where she can say, I did agree to, and I'm still in that window, so I really don't want to accept that. And I can see the information too for that too, where we can, you know, figure out what those dates are. But for the application of SB 190 to apply for it, if you want to accept it, the Missouri Association of Counties did release some information this morning, kind of giving guidance to counties on how to implement it. And there was an application. So that would be one thing that we as elections would take a look at and see if there's any modifications we need to make to the application that would apply to our county residents. So that guidance that the state put out to us was just released this morning. So it's a little bit clearer, but there's still a lot more questions.
Is that available for us to go online and look at?
I can send it to you. I mean, they sent it to us, so it's public information. I'd be more than happy to send it to you so you can look at it. We digest it as well.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's probably a little bit too.
It's been, yeah.
Missouri Association of Counties, probably referring to there. To answer a question that was not asked, there is no clear way for the county to identify who would be qualified at whatever age, because that's not something that is necessarily requested in a public information process. And so you can pull voter rolls, but that isn't always conclusive as well. So theoretically, to the process that we talked about, it would likely be an application that has to be submitted to everyone to make it available for everyone. Although some can even question our ability to get mail out appropriately, as not everyone has received a notice as well. So there's a lot of challenges with that process, but that is where the executive should step in and say, this is the process that we'll outline. I think what we're discussing at this point is just prioritizing, and that is the biggest priority for him and his team, his administration, within this year or next year, or whatever that time frame you need for meditation. And I would say that rolls into also, the taxing jurisdictions then can't predict the impact, and it just rolled and snowballs very quickly as to some of the funding challenges. Go ahead.
My name is Gordon Davis. My taxes grow, and this, and so I'm trying to get the standard, but this place is not new, and then you can't see, but I've gone up there a million times, but you know, I understand that Texas, so my thing is, I'm never trying to figure out how this goes out. So you're saying that my understanding, I have to qualify for the taxes, or I have to kind of submit something for this?
Theoretically both. So you'd have to qualify by age as of right now, under SB 190, but the process actually does not currently exist in the state as of yet. And so there would have to be a formalized plan. Under SB 190, basically every county can opt into this or not. And so what may happen in Jackson County is that we opt in, but Cole County may not. And so Cole County won't have that impact, but Jackson County may. Or Cole County may opt in and say, everyone that tells us that they're 62 or 65 is in, and we just believe you, we just trust you. And Jackson County may say, you have to fill out 17 pages and go to 47, and go to 45, and you go to 20. The process is up to the county.
So if we went to next year, I still would be likely to vote every way we do by assessing?
At the 23 rate. So whatever the 23 rate is, if you are in appeals right now and it goes down, that's the rate. If you, whatever your final rate is in the 2023 tax year.
And that's what I'm going to say, I would be straight from the county, the city county.
It's, I think there's a question of whether it's 62, whether you qualify for social security or 65.
Right. One eligibility, I'm looking at it now as you're talking, one eligibility states is eligible for social security retirement benefits, and then there's another paragraph that says, generally speaking, to be eligible for social security retirement benefits, a person must be 62 or older and have worked and paid social security taxes for two years or more.
Okay, so I'm trying to follow that. So I guess, well, my understanding, I guess we have really to answer with the state. Why do you someone spend their very good tax?
I would suggest contacting your state reps.
State reps, why?
No, we're the county. And so I think that's, that's the difference here, is that the state dictates that to us, and we opt in or out, but we don't have the control over the state, I wish, but we don't. And so I think that's part of the challenge here, is that we can advocate, so some of the things that we suggested are all advocacy moments for the state to say, yeah, that's a good idea, take it on, pass it in legislative process. But I think it's telling to say that over 150 uses of good ideas, or some not, all made it down to this one that they put together in a couple of weeks. So that should be telling about the legislative process in terms of this.
So is this up to a vote or something?
It is up for a vote of the legislature to adopt whether this county will opt in or not. And since there is no process, we are saying this is a priority that the executive has to rule out.
So I have a good chance.
I think it has a good chance. I mean, we've also voted a resolution that says that SB 190 should be in a bill, a bill turns into a law, and then presumptively the same amount of folks, I think it was eight to one, would likely adopt the SB 190. So I think, I think it's going to happen as much as then what afterwards. And I think that's where I would personally say, I'll bring up legislation to help advocate for fixes that may allow the school districts to opt in, or, so that that way it's not a matter of one government telling the next lower body that we're dictating for you. If the state gave us an option, maybe that's something that we consider. But there are other fixes. And as to your point, there are complete fixes that are dramatically different in other states, but those weren't passed in bills that made law, and so we don't have those opportunities to discuss them. Go ahead, Legislature.
And I, excuse me, I will say, Legislature Barca is very spot on when it comes to, this is what we have. I have, but we all have some issues with it, but one of my issues is, I'm an retired postal employee. Those employees that are in the civil service may not qualify because they haven't been competing for social security for two years. There are firefighters who will not qualify. So some people that are part of unions, retired from a union organization, who was a teacher, for instance, will not qualify. So being as concerned about that as I have been, I did read, and I'm very happy to know, that if you have a spouse, that you could rely on that spouse as a student. But, you know, that includes a few more people, but we're still excluding. But this is what we have.
So so do you prefer excluding, or are we going to tell a teacher?
All of them.
If you retired, if you don't receive social security or are not eligible for social security.
How does he assess?
Whether you would qualify.
So conversely, it also would include people who own a mansion that need that age qualification as well as those who need it. So there are some, these are other elements that are challenging. But again, I think that this is where the state has to step up and solve some of the problems, or quite frankly, to give counties more opportunity to set their own taxes. She's going to, yeah. And I'm glad we have a panel of educators and superintendent and admin folks here to check us out. This is, it's always fun.
Hi, I'm, my name is Ted Condon, I live in the Ritz Center. So I have one question, I have, the question is different from my work. So just to clarify, if there's some sort of rollback, slap tax, whatever happens somewhere in 2023, that everybody is tapped at 15, 20%, or whatever.
Not in discussion at the moment, but.
Would that affect this for people who are concerned that they did not appeal? So if all this is just, if you didn't appeal and you got a 60% increase and you got lost in the process, you're just screwed for the rest of your life, or?
There are two people who can make that three technically, who can make those adjustments. County Executive, the Board of Equalization, and the state. And so nothing about a freezer or backward, rollback is not something that we're discussing because under state law, that doesn't exist as an option outside of those three rules. And so my guess is Frank White's not going to do it. Frank White's Board of Equalization's not going to do it. So you would have to rely on the state to then trigger that, whether it's a state tax commission or legislative action. Now, legislature's not going back into session. Now, legislature is not going back into session so far this year. So you're looking at January to begin the process. And that's going to be probably until the summer before you get any bills that can go into law. So you're, that rollback concept, I think at this point is not likely. So SB 190 again becomes the only possibility that exists right now.
So then my, I guess my comments on the specific eligibility portion of SB 190, are you saying that as it stands, county can't make anything more restrictive than what the state made guidelines say? Or you can make more restrictive as an income cap? If you're on social security, but your annual income is $350,000 because you've got a trust fund from granny or whatever, or you live in a mansion on the hill, and you're 72 years old and you don't have to budget anything for your electric bill or anything like that, but you're still going to get this? Because my suggestion would be the least would be an income limit and it should be only on one primary resident, not people that have 12 rental properties all around. They don't give a, and they make them on all 12 rental properties.
Yeah, it's only one residence, that's for sure. That's in SB 190. The other component, I don't believe, and I just looked at my colleague's seat because I didn't even see the magnitude yet. So it sounds like that hasn't been something we're able to do. And it, it may be, but it subjects itself to a legal challenge, which all of this does, right? And there's another opportunity for tax jurisdictions to sue us to say that we're withholding the tax dollars and we're the last victim, so.
Well, that's what I see. But side of the, yes, I would like to have a view for my own personal resident, but it's not fair to all of the other entities that rely on my tax money for schools, for roads, for emergency preparedness for fire and all that sort of stuff if everybody gives a baked one and that. And especially it's not, it's not fair if people who have a $50,000 retirement income versus those who have $150,000 retirement income both get to benefit from not paying any extra parking time. Okay, so then my other request or desire for SB 190 qualification would be that you have been a resident of Jackson County for X number of years. Because all of these people who are living in here from all of these other planets, in the past two and a half years, who don't know anything about taxes in the real world, I'm not, I'm not exactly keen on them getting a tax payment either. So that's my, that's it. Is that, is that included or is that something like?
That specifically is not included. But I would say you illuminate something that is really part of our challenge. Those, those types of, for lack of a better word, exclusions would have to be under, under legal counsel. It's the last example you gave, you know, with someone being a resident of Jackson County for certain years. There's, there's plenty of people who, you know, like myself, military retired and choose, so they could have a million or four this amount of time. And then there's some other type of tax, tax credits or whatnot that may come from those who are disabled that moved in for whatever reason. We could be potentially excluding those taxpayers if we were to put those type of provisions in place. And so part of our challenge is being able to, you know, understand and agree with the eligibility specifications and restrictions on it. But also being the way, trying to find a way to where we can still get tax dollars to those that are needed, but also not excluding the one who may need relief. And that's part of the challenge. But may be good for one group, may not be good for the other. And so for us trying to kind of figure out where that balance is, is, is really part of our challenge with implementation of this.
So who would I need to contact to be, whether it was at the state level or is it somewhere else to say, y'all need to come back and you type this up or whatever? Because I personally know that in the state reserve, the Missouri State Veterans Retirement Home, who's supposed to be about five or six of them around the state. Those who are intended and we pay tax dollars and we pay a subsidy for those to need for veterans living in the state of Missouri, who have to be able to have a place to go when they can no longer care for themselves or live at home. What happened when they opened those was veterans from all over the country walked to Missouri and filled them up. So then who are a veteran in the state of Missouri now, the waitlist is like five years or something. Because it's majority of people who barely had any residency at all before they being applied for the retirement. So that's what I'm saying. You have to kind of look at this stuff of, it was good intention at the beginning, but you got to put a limit somewhere. You need to at least have lived here 10 years and have contributed to the ups and downs of Jackson County for at least 10 years. And I got one of those 15 years.
Are we in enough or a down in security? I'm kidding. No, so I think that the perspective that I could provide to this is that other tax shelters or tax protections do require some of those standards. And so it is not uncommon that they would include some of that or contribution, that if you made investments in your home, that would then include you from paying taxes for 700 years. And so it is not unreasonable to make those statements.
Okay, so the last question on the.
I mean, there's no one else, I don't think is here yet, so.
There is.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
So are there any other counties in Missouri that you are aware of yet who are trying to move this on or be out there on the long range?
I think there's one that county that's considering it at this point that we're aware of. No one has, yeah, no one has implemented it yet. And so again, I think some folks are looking to be shown how to do it and others maybe waiting for the 20th deadline. And there's, there's also some discussion and fairness to say that this cannot be rushed, it should not be rushed probably, or both. Because then maybe we're going to create a messy process for inviting folks to participate. However, I think some folks are also coming to us and saying they're going to lose their homes if we don't provide this. So I think that this is part of the challenge of where do we act and how do we determine who's going to actually implement this process? It's our body's requirement to enact legislation. It will be the executives to execute. I'll leave it at that.
So the best thing for us, do we have other thoughts? Do you go ahead and contact your state commissioners? Do they need to pack it up?
I think it's the state, the governor. I think you can also talk to the county executive because he's going to ultimately be the one who has to implement this. And rarely is it, yeah.
We have to find it.
If you find it.
My name is Marsha Masquez. And I am just was taking a few notes. I did a plan on skipping the after hearing lawsuit. I feel like I'm compelled to do so. First of all, I would encourage everyone to check out the class action lawsuit that I actually thought was kind of ridiculous. But they amended that, it's now 44 pages long and I don't need you to read it carefully.
There's two of them, I think.
Well, the one that I'm talking about is her claim. And that has, they are trying their best to get that dismissed, but I hope you won't read every page of that. Because if all of you can use that case, if you felt at all coerced, because many of the people were probably coerced and consigning. And because they did not follow stipulations, they, that may be your way to say, no, you can't do this to people. Okay, so that's one thing. And by the way, the beautiful thing now is that since July, around the beginning of July, all documents, you can view them from your home now. If they are highlighted in blue, you now can just go from your home and you can click on them. So you don't have to go to the courthouse anymore. I spent a lot of time at the courthouse, not on this, but on another law that I have been very concerned in, concerned with as far as partition and the people losing their homes. But that's a different topic. They're not following that law either, in my opinion. Okay, so read that lawsuit if you can't get a chance. You will know the characters that are involved. It doesn't specifically say Frank White, but you can find it through Tyler Technologies. You can find it with Dan Beatty. You can just locate it by letting its name. The next thing, and I'm, I'm serious. There is so much in that lawsuit that will help you. If any of those things you, had happened to you, just bring that up. Sean Smith, legislator Sean Smith, I believe, has put out an email through Stacy, she was the.
Josh Gussman.
Yeah. She, he suggested if you felt coerced at all, to fill out a complaint, a complaint to draw attention to the fact. If you felt coerced, to sign that, okay? Also, I have a concern. We went through a, one of our, you know, the, it was the informal. I have a very big concern about the role of those brokers. And I don't have any problem with brokers. But I have a big concern about the way brokers were explained on the news. They were supposed to have a whole line of brokers that would help you as the taxpayer or the, you know, person being assessed, that they were going to help you with finding, you know, comparables for you. But as it turned out, when we went, after they started them up again, you know, like after August the first, then they had one broker sitting up there, not identifying the person. You know, she didn't identify herself. But then whenever I started asking questions about the people I was dealing with, I found out that the broker was actually wearing a badge from the assessment department. And I thought, we bought in comps that were used from other people in my neighborhood, but we were not able to use that. And those are discounted. We, we had, you know, information about things like roof estimates. We had, you know, concrete work that we need on our home. A home isn't a new home. But the thing of it is, none of that mattered. And those are courses are generally TV. Those are not made up. We went through that. So our right to an informal appeal has been chilled because if we, we feel like on our son's property, and we own part of that as well, we're afraid that if we go in there, they're going to do the same thing and then get all of these comps that have nothing to do with a house that you have. Okay, so, so we wanted our, our price to be a certain price. I think it was $595. But they came in with comps that were 1.2, all of these ridiculous prices that they didn't even, one of them literally had 32 acres. We live on 1.5 or about an acre and a half. And so, I mean, it's egregious what's happening here. And so if anybody has a problem, you can look into that case. You can file a complaint. I'm just trying to give you ideas. I can study this in my new, my new job. And I'm a retired school teacher after 31 years. But it's been my new job. I can watch so much local news in my life. But that's, that is your life. If you want to know what's going on because you don't hear it from anyone else that they can investigate and report. Okay, so another thing. If you did not receive your notice by June the 15th, read that case because that is statute. If your, if your assessment went up more than 50, no, 15%, I believe it is.
14.99.
Yeah, they keep it at 14.99. Okay, so if it went up for 15%, they had to have, they had to do it physical. They had to do so many things that they didn't do. It's just very difficult.
I want to conscious that we're not doing too much in the assessment because I'm sure everyone in this room would have an opinion about assessment.
Right.
Because I think even up here, we all have different opinions, most of the same, but opinions about, about the assessment. I think we should stay focused on SB 190. I don't want to get anyone too distracted.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, now, another thing that I would like to mention too is that you, you were asking this, are you saying that you don't know of other counties that are doing the CINCA 190 and preparing for that? I believe up north, they've already been doing this even before the governor's son. It was either Platte County or Platte. They have a, they have a system, I think, that they're contemplating that has to do with the collector. They have a form, an application, and you have to swear to, you know, it's an affidavit. And you have to make sure that you're telling the truth, obviously. It can only be from your home stem, you know, one property. But that's another thing.
That's maybe if you agree with state laws. If they are doing it, that would be something subjected to the state process. There are quad pay programs that the county has for seniors. There are payment programs that are usually related to the collectors that can help defer the tax burden all at once. And so I don't know that there are.
I know what you're talking about.
Current savings necessarily like this. There may be tax diversion programs, 353s, that would offset some folks. But so far, I think SB 190 is the only broad opportunity to reduce the tax burden on jurisdictions. So the county may be relieving its own jurisdiction.
Okay, I think I didn't make myself clear. Okay, what I meant is they, you know, when we were, you were talking about the forms and how it does be implemented, people were asking about it. That's what I'm talking about. You may check with some of those up north. Because I think there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. If we have something as a model, and by the way, I would recommend using St. Charles as a good model. You know, this is all about counties. Is this a state? It's county.
So I think Missouri Association of Counties has been very helpful.
That's what I was referring to a long ago. There hasn't been a county who's actually voted to implement SB 190. So what was released this morning with guidance from Missouri Association of Counties on how to implement as well as an example of an application for taxpayers to submit to their counties. So that's.
And unfortunately, we don't get to implement. So this body only governs. And so that would be the executive's ability to implement or not or that. So we could take it back certainly, but if he wants, you know, Coke instead of Pepsi, that's his prerogative.
Okay, and without getting into details, I'd like to give one more resource, which is the State Tax Commission Assessors Manual. If you feel like you, you need to look into that, it gives specific directions on what is supposed to be happening. I won't go into details, but you can read it yourself. I appreciate the time.
And to that note, to some degree, several of us have inquired on data-specific information about this assessment period, processes of individuals receiving reduction over 15%, individuals receiving reduced values above 15%. So trying to catch it on both ends. And we have received zero data in response from the executive. And we've asked for some of that multiple times, multiple meetings. And so some of this is not within our authority to go make do as much as we requested. We don't receive it. And I think that's why you saw so much react to about the audit. And so just to put that out there. I don't want to go too far down the assessment because that's a whole other debacle. Town halls have heard about those.
Well, this has to do actually with the tax itself. There are, there's something called a residential report card. Are you even familiar with those?
Based upon who? So I think that.
It's from the assessment department.
And I, I think that would be voluntary, I'm guessing, because they're not volunteering.
Oh, it's your property. You can ask for it.
Oh, the taxpayer.
The requests for records are delayed 30 days. So, you know, you're not, you're not getting it from there.
Well, I think we're going to open it up for others to.
Manny, thank you. Megan, thank you very much. If I understand it right, I'm kind of a civil guy. Senate Bill 190 does not stop seniors from paying taxes, just freezes them at the 23 level.
Correct.
There's nothing in the law or in the statute that says that any increase in that tax can be deferred. I didn't, I didn't see anything about the permit. Is the, is the county legislator, or legislative body, or the county executive able to put something like that into Jackson County? My concern as a Board of Education member is the decrease in funds for our specific school district. If this bill, and I understand most legislators are in support of this. I think I heard that statement. I think I heard that statement. So it sounds like Jackson County will probably adopt Senate Bill 190. Is there anything in there to recoup the lost of revenue for the political subdivisions? Whether it be library, ambulance, fire, whatever, parks, school districts especially. Is there anything to recover the lost revenue as far as the deferred payment? Has that been brought up whatsoever? Does the county have the authority to amend that statute?
I think Megan's dying to answer this.
Short answer, no. And that's when, you know, the county gets into the business of where can we move funds around. So when we talk about recouping one specific taxing body for another, that again comes into play when we talk about future budgets and programs and things like that that are funded out of the tax dollars that are collected. Because I'm sure you know it's over 60% of every dollar goes to the school districts. And so if that revenue is leased, we've got to find it somewhere. And so that's part of us attempting to be proactive, to understand what that revenue loss means for school districts and to try to get creative and figure out how to best recoup to those I need.
The reason I ask that question because I'm kind of a winter Texan, and I talk to a lot of school personnel when I travel to Texas, whether it be Houston, Dallas, Travis County, Galveston County, or Dallas County, or Harris County, whatever county it is that the largest corporation is in. Texas does have a law that's similar to this, but it's not frozen. It's deferred until the house is sold or the unfortunate event that we're all going to die, that the taxpayer actually dies and then that's gone into the estate and it comes back to that governing body. And there is a small interest. I think it's a 1.2% interest for that deferred payments.
I think there, I would personally say, and I think even the assessor agrees, that a deferral opportunity is an option that is more palatable. Particularly for taxing jurisdictions, it's not really more predictable, right? But at least there's revenues that can come back. There is no necessarily provision right now of recurrence from 190 to 191. I will say that unlike other tax mechanisms that provide relief, 353s that, you know, straight tip if you're a KCPS, I mean, that can go 50, 100 years, depending upon how they do those. And so this provision only lasts the lifetime of that home, or their time in that home. And so in some situations, those things are frozen in place for that residence, and that's different. So not the best answer, but it could be better, it could be a lot better. Rebecca's in charge, so I don't want to point at anybody because I'm going to mess up her system.
So I've got two questions. The first one, if Senate 190 was adopted by, or passed or overturned by the legislature of Jackson County and then it's vetoed by the county executive, what is your path to overturn that veto? What does that rule look?
Well, the chair's in the back, he can answer that. So it requires six votes for us, so five for actual adoption. If he vetoes it, it requires six. Predictably, I mean, I think eight to one people support SB 190. So I don't know what will happen. Everything, politics is always possible, so things can change. But likely, that would be over it.
Okay. Okay, the next one, there's been a lot of talk here about freezing at 23 rates and the appeal, as we know, deadline has passed. And not everybody's getting that necessarily, the appeal is ultra high. But I understand there's an opportunity, even in non-assessment years, that you can still appeal. So would it be possible for someone that missed the deadline, many seniors did even know about this, to appeal in '24 and then benefit of maybe a lower appeal value from '24?
That's a good question. I think as an assessment executive, an executive discussion, I don't know that we've mentally passed this process of SB 190 to start on the next process yet.
Right, and that's understandable, but I think that's something, because I think a lot of people missed the vote on these appeals for '23. So if there is an option that in '24, they can appeal and get their property assessed properly and then have their rates frozen there.
Yeah, I mean, there are other questions too about like, I'm 75 now, why can't I have it when I was 62? Like, yeah. So I think that at some point legislatively, you have to draw a line in the sand and stick to it. And unfortunately, that's what we're at in the moment, with this piece of research. It's not the best, but it does offer some relief at some point. Likewise, Sarah, if we're not answering questions in the room.
Hi, my name is Lenny Law, and I'm a patron of this school district. When I call the graduate from this school, it's people a lot of people in the world. Welcome back. With the changers back, their class is 71. I just wanted to thank you all for all of your wonderful work. I've been following you on Facebook, on Instagram, on the Monocity Telegraph, and lots of places that you speak now. And so this is just thank you. My cap, I will say, my cap is going up 56%. I would feel, I haven't heard from you this much in years. But I just wanted to thank you all for all of your wonderful work and for scanning out for the citizens and the children.
Thank you. Yeah, you're invited to every forum in the public town hall. As if you're invited to every town hall or public forum, your checks are in the bag. Thank you, goodbye.
I never know that I was on 190. How many cry?
There you go.
During Randy on Thursday night. A couple of things. First of all, I'll say, thanks to you, because you're a back, you really remember the language. You could not add this conversation. So we do appreciate, and then we got, we're not prepared, we do appreciate that. I've got a couple of questions for clarification, but just not quite sure. When you talk about the caps, and this is for '23. If you're looking at 5771, page 3 of 7, 157, 22.
One second, we're getting copies.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to hand. Everybody got it, but you guys.
We've seen it a couple times, but as of 2020. All right, which section?
Section 25772. Amount of tax how calculated? Okay, so my question is, it sounds like those conversations that whatever the tax assessments were for '23, they were stayed. And then, after they did, that would be like, you'd be frozen out of the county. And so from this initial standpoint, their assessments would be closer to 300, 400, 500, 600. But as I read this, this is a part that I'm not sure. It says, minus the real property tax liability on such homes in 2022 or in the year of the taxpayer being more than 50%. That makes it sound like when you take the assessment from '23, minus what the assessment lost in '22, that's what the tax record is. That's a big difference in terms of looking at the power. So that's something that I'm probably, my reading is not, it's
I think that's a fair bit of a statement, or just leaving it. And our, my initial discussion was more along the lines of 23 being based. So there's no actual, there would be no return of revenue, there'd be no lost revenue. And I think even the author of this had suggested that you're not actualizing your revenue because that is capped, right? That's just a tier of your funding structure that would just never increase. And so there would be no lost funds, and so, so lack of that.
So I want to speak to all of these questions. The cap does provide, and when you look very closely at the budgets, if they know what the real property assessment is, that they set the limit on, or I set the limit. And our way to this reduction, that is, is feeling that's what happens for senior citizens. It just doesn't get closer for the current, current tax. So that's a question. The other question I have is going to be right below that. Proportionality of the tax burden levels is what's such credits have applied proportionately to all taxing jurisdictions in which Kelly distributed real property taxes, etc., based on the taxing jurisdictions, which one you're living in. I'm questioning what the real proportionality means. Because there's nothing proportionate about the facilities or taxes that the parents have versus the private ones, versus the school, versus the library, versus the nonprofit group. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I think it's important to be thinking.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what proportionality means. Is it just a certain percent, or a certain percentage that you, that you're allowed? Any of that's
So for non-people like us, your rate is set at $150,000 in 2023. Theoretically, it should go up $180,000. How do you justify a reduction based upon the taxing jurisdictions? Equally, how do you reduce that, right? And you can't just cut off the $20,000 increase, you have to actually proportionate. That's the work, right? How do you balance the impact across all the different taxing jurisdictions? It is a very good question, and I think one I could come back with a little more depth.
One last, I don't know if you're watching, but hopefully, this is a if you look at, page 5 of 7, when you look at critical belt ability for 2023, you're going to have for a light standpoint for our school districts, that would seem to make sense and that would be happening on the other end. If the tax assessment for '23 is frozen, on that day, anybody would be able to apply. Say, can I get the information out of you? And then, when you give your assessment information to the taxing jurisdictions right away here, you have an accurate assessment to be given based upon those requirements.
Yeah, I think that's an implementation question, that is very fair, right? Again, thinking about this in terms of maybe some owners can consume. You get hired on a new job, you have an X amount of time that you can apply for different things, right? If you miss that window, you miss the opportunity, right? And I think that's where we're going here, is for the predictive factor of school budgets, you need to know what that rate is going to be.
Well, in tax bills, the tax bill is that, if I'm on your winter break, we've got a lot of shouldn't come out in 2023.
Yeah, and notice what's supposed to happen in March.
Yeah, that's a lot of work that you've done between now and, thank you.
Any comments, questions, thoughts? I mean, I don't want to Okay, great observations. That's exactly the process. And as you see, we're adjusting to try and understand what this may mean and reinterpretation of others that aren't locked in the seventh floor on Mondays from like, 8:00 to 5:00.
I'm also like, just quoting for sake of just understanding processes. 5774 is ordinance. So basically, what that means is ordinance is a law. So we put an ordinance into place, saying this is what the county is willing to do. There's also another piece of legislation called resolutions. And that's what we use to refine those processes as situations change and things evolve. So if and when an ordinance is ever put into place and there's things that change in order to change that implements a different, that without changing the intent of ordinance or law, that's what a resolution can be, it can be used as like an amendment to what the county puts in place.
Somebody else has something to share.
Yeah. So first question is, is there a remark on earlier? How do you enable this accessible for elderly and disabled people who don't know how to use computers? Might not have access, they might have been in the hospital, and various things. How do you plan to get this out and tell the people about this, but they can apply in time and they get on it?
Yeah, I mean, computers aren't the best way to receive this. No, I think that is a question that the executive and the assessor would like to really address in a situation that have to spell out. And I think that's part of the process that we're still unclear about. And that is outside of our control, unfortunately. I had invited the assessor, the executive, and the board utilization to justify the current process for assessment and how inequable and accessible that is. And the first time, no one showed up, and the second time, I canceled. So I admit that it's perfect experience of children. So it is a real thing that I think implementation has to be done pretty accurately. Otherwise, no one will have access. So, but again, outside of our control as to how that occurs, that's the executive's thing.
Thank you. I'm not impressed, but when do you guys plan to vote on this?
So presumptively, at this point, it's supposed to be August 28th. And I will say, some of Dr. Southwood's suggestions, these are amendments that can be made that can rely on clarity and adjust it in the same day, and it's still going to be voted out. And so I think all of these things are very fair and balanced, and clarity needs to be relied on. And if it can't be, that's where I think a delay could occur in the actual process as well. And that is of all of us, it's not the action of our own. So it would be something that we would have to discuss, but presumptively, at this point, the 28th of August.
Out of committee.
Out of committee and the legislature.
And going right into
Same here.
Okay, and then my elderly neighbor was able to apply through meeting, thankfully, but she was unable to get the informal meeting. So we're sort of waiting for the board equalization meeting. And I've seen that this can take up to two years to get your meeting with them. So hypothetically, this passes, what can I tell my elderly neighbor as far as what to do when we get that tax done?
So a couple of things, process again, all executive assessor office. We did understand that they have opened up informals again. For all those individuals who have a board utilization appeal in place already, and who have the documentation, because then they can get to an informal settlement. Not, it sounds like something that everyone's agreed to, but it's a settlement. So kind of exists now. In terms of the latter part of that, it's a waiting game in terms of, I guess, implementation. Because even if we authorize this ordinance, and then we override it for some to veto, the county executive still has to implement. And if he doesn't, there's no real recourse the legislature can take if he doesn't do it. And so in fact, to your point, which I wish we could have gotten there, we authorized a process for which the executive can issue contracts to nonprofit organizations to do what he did for the neighbor. That was never acted on. So he never issued opportunities for nonprofits to support people to make it more accessible. He didn't start with some programs that allowed people to come to, come to the layer, sorry, come to 1300 Washington and get these other resources. But again, that's questionable, it's not a third-party process, and there's other things involved with that. So I mean, if the county executive refuses to act, there's not much the legislature can do other than cut budgets. And when it comes to the assessor's office, she's funded through the taxing jurisdiction percentage that she collects. And so there's not much stick left for us to chew on.
Okay, thank you.
I had just a question on it. My name is Eric, I'm a teacher here, representing teachers for state and association. I've been here 24 years, I'm a test candidate, self-assigned, as a holder of the taxpayer. But I was looking at this, page 4, earlier today, in the first section. I guess I just looked at the schedule, it's 205, 7.4, duty to see constitution for the statements. Could that maybe be expounded upon for me? I get the articles 10, section 6 part, but I'm not sure.
So unless anyone wants to jump in here, I think SB 190 has phrases that suggest the state could reimburse taxing jurisdictions.
Meaning school districts.
And for anyone that would otherwise have other taxes collected. The likelihood of us getting a check from the state is like the likelihood of you getting a raise from the state. Did you?
So it's just in here, just because it's an analysis?
I personally believe that, I think the state is passing the buck to some extent on their inability to figure out some on their inability to figure out some of the solutions and they wanted to provide this language to say, well, maybe we'll think about providing some support from this eight billion dollar opportunity that I had in the middle fund bonds. State has money, so I mean, it could if they wanted to. But theoretically, everyone would run their money and just continue to offer this type of tax opportunity. This opportunity could come up for the next batch of people and we'd be taxing and relating ourselves a bunch of things. So it's never going to decide that to some degree. So I think it's, it's an easy thing to get out of. We agree. Opinion.
Hello, my name is Ron. I've lived in Kansas City for the last 20 years, have been a regular area. And I've never lived outside of Kansas City or got some kind of a way through. The question I have upfront there, like for sure we have touched on this because let's make a bathroom grade is, has to do with the tax freeze for senior citizens. My understanding is, what I read is the taxes froze would be, let's just say it's $5,000 that remained from tax. The way it technically works is that tax can still go up. Let's say you get a bill for $6,000, you will receive a $1,000 credit. So with that bill, we'll save $5,000. Likewise, five years because of $10,000, you'll see a credit for $5,000 in your bill. So maybe then a $5,000. Is there anything in SB 190 or even at the legislative level that would prevent those homeowners from appealing future tax increases if they disagree with the number goes up?
I don't believe so. And in fact, I think that would be the game if you were playing the long game of that. You know, your taxes are frozen at $100,000 and next year you're $300,000 says value. You don't really care because yours is frozen. When you sell your house and it's over assessed, then you're going to get it. So it could theoretically continue to rise and in fact, that's what it does now for individuals who receive a tax break from any other incentive program, three could continue to assess value still there and your bill would just net zero if that's what the freeze is.
Yes, and you're right. You may not care, but you probably should because it will affect the future value of that home. Our assessment was some crazy thing this year. And Sean emailed recently. Yes, if you want to be orphaned in your own neighborhood with a tax bill of $12,000, everybody else is paying $5 or $6. So yes, in the interest of future homeowners and buyers and people living in the county, everybody should consider protesting or appeal those future tax increases if they're exorbitant. In that case, if you're over 50% of the dividend to you period, probably due to the rule.
I was trained by a pretty amazing CFO and I was a school board member and I think SB was around 15% on average increases per year. So I think that's pretty dramatic if you're like me receiving 92% increase. It's because I'm older.
That's it, thank you.
I think you said that point about still protesting if your increase is a certain percentage because that stage suggests sustainability of any of those, of our school districts for the long term, our grandchildren and people that come behind after us. So while in the current, we're considering our profits right now, which is important with us that right now, also being able to consider that as well as long term for those that come after us.
Yeah, and I think I would say one step further is why all of us here supported legislation that said freeze it with a fixed increase while you continue to find your actual value. But again, that, that's an advocacy perspective. It's not necessarily going to be necessarily implement. The executive, the board utilization, the state, so.
First off, thank you for your current service and your prior service. We appreciate it. I, you know, we all recognize the county assessor office have multiple executives and assessors and have been doing big swings, right? So 2008, 2018, the assessment was kind of down 3%. Now in one year, that housing went up 38% on average. And I was more loving average, like 58.5%. So I do appreciate that, you know, legislation, the way we could help just handle that now. But I also know that they struggle to do their job over there because they're probably under management. And I heard the county executive asking for more people if they're going to do this so they can dedicate to this. And it came to a tune, I think, of a $360,000 budget. Are you going to support their ability to implement this with increased budget? And then he also made you fish, I think you fish during the county first to see the impact before the impact by our departments, you know, the school district itself, which you consider that piece as well. We don't know the impact because it's never been done in the state this way. We can come to other states, but you're right, other states like New York, Georgia, South Dakota, they have the income part of it too. This doesn't have an income part of it, but certainly we don't know what the impact will be. Thank you.
Where to start with that?
I'll go first.
Go first.
I'll say that, and I personally have always been an advocate for whatever the departments need, that it's our job to extend that budget and to find that. My only point of contention personally with that is that when we get into this understanding diligence, I mean, for example, this last budget year, the assessment department didn't ask for any of that because they have what they need to do the job that they're doing and getting where we are. So I am cautious, cautiously supportive of that about providing more with not having clear idea of understanding what the actual process is. Because this, this last assessment process and other processes in other departments is not clear and is very confusing. Before we add more iron to the fire, I think that it would be you and the county executive and all the staff together to clearly line out what those processes are, modify them or at least we modify them, and then put those resources at that, in that direction.
And my concern with such a request is this. They had data to come up with that. There were analytics done to come up with that figure, but when we need data, it's unavailable. So I am in no way insinuating that they hope it's not needed. My concern is looking at the data, doing the analytics and making it informed decision.
So as you saw me jump on my cell phone, I was looking for the budget book. Because as I remember, there's $2.69 billion in their undesignated fund bonds. And so if they still choose to do that, they could at any time allocate those resources to that budget to do those things. On top of that, I believe they are budgeted for 50 additional staff, I think, or around 40 or 50 staff that are unfilled currently. And so I think that's more of a management issue than a resources issue to me. And to my knowledge, the county executive does not directly share you that because he's never at our meetings. So I know the assessor suggested some things as we are starting this budget process and inviting dreaming, but I don't know that more resources, I think to the legislative marshal's point, more resources mean better service. We put and invested $18 million of our tax dollars towards Tyler Technologies and so far it seems like we had a worse outcome. And so it is, it is a management issue to fight.
So I have one other thought that crossed my mind as we were talking. And I, and I know that every school district probably knows this number off the top of their head, but I didn't know if someone is running the tab of comparisons that if you go through this potential tax credit for senior citizens. Because I hear a lot of alarm from different districts and different taxing entities, oh my God, we hate giving old people a tax credit because they'll lose all of our money. Does anyone have, I'm sure they do have, the number of TIFs that have been granted to multiple different corporations in this entire county to know what that is? I know everyone knows it for school district. I don't know that they just tally it up as an aggregate across the county to balance that against the minimum number of old people who have been getting a potential, I don't know, $2,000 maybe, $500 tax credit stolen forward on the primary residence. So I'm just saying, I think we're still kind of where you're losing your money on all of this stuff which from TIFs that have been granted at the state level and whatever, you know, at whatever level, city, county, whatever it is. But is, is anyone keeping score on that? Because I know how to use a pencil on a calculator. I know how to use a slideboard too, you know, whatever.
I would like to give our superintendents or apps and staff an opportunity to share each of what their TIFs impact is on the budget if they'd like to. I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
I got mine all covered. Last year, last year was $50 million. This year went up to $72 million.
Lisa and Casey. What was yours, Catherine?
PCPS is about 45 million a year.
And I don't know what the discernment is. I just know that if I was here, then maybe it would be.
We went from $50 million last year, her estimate is $72 million with county assessor prior. As far as what the impact is in the one, I can give no data. We haven't been on the data either, so.
We want to store cards to give, so this is what, this is what the money actually went down to.
And maybe Dr. Southwick has a broad...
So we talked about literacy and technical awareness and word wording and all of that for years in terms of, we understand that to do those things has a reason, that usually a good law of schools as well, so that continues to go. So one of the things that we were having a discussion about applying to that in some is that the tax rate freeze is based upon assessment. If by chance Dr. Cordell wants to let 50 something else do something special in the country, and that passes, would that be added? Because that, that helps talk about the levy and not the assessment. And if not, you take it everywhere you want. You take it wherever you want. I'm 60 now. I haven't seen you since. So I mean, that's a, when we talk about the freezing of assessments, we're not talking about if a county needs a raise or an add sign or a license or school district, an extra $50 for people to use. Would that, would that also be frozen?
I think presumptively at this point, everything would be frozen. Now you levy on top of a freezer is another good question, but the same holds true for the previous ones. Folks voted these in and are we overriding the rule of those voters that said we wanted rest in these ways by enacting the freezer? Theoretically, without a vote, I mean, voted the representatives in, voted the governor in, voted rest in, we're not. And so wouldn't we have the ability to eliminate our voters who prove alive? That's a very good question and I don't think it's clear in, in the legislation either.
But we are, I think all of the things of law issues and that, sometimes we don't have to, because they are. And again, that's probably something else for you.
Here lies some of the challenges with the legislation without that.
I heard something that I wanted to talk about. I don't try to confine myself to what it is. So in this document here, do we have anything about the Hancock Amendment? I understand it doesn't work for the Kansas City public schools, but a lot, most of the other schools are involved with the Hancock Amendment. They cannot be the windfall. So whenever you've got these extorment, unfilled tax situations or assessments, I should say, that needs to be considered and it would be really nice if some of these superintendents or people that are in the know, you know, about the Hancock Amendment would explain this. Isn't it here at all or not?
So it's separate. So Hancock is a state law that exists now, so this wouldn't contradict, although there would be some question of overlap. So another challenge with the lack of clarity in the legislation. I will not accept the blame, I think, burden yet on the school districts as the county is responsible right now for running its own levies before they get the opportunity to do that. And so I will say right now, that's where we sit in the collections and assessment process of Jackson County before I say them to run numbers. So I will have the county over there.
Okay. And one other clarification I'd like for you to try to raise about is one woman that here with the elderly neighbor, I believe it was, said something about the informal or, and then you responded with you can do the informal. My understanding is if you have a BOE scheduled, you are no longer available to do that informal review. They don't allow that anymore.
Then that would have changed again from their own notice to us as of the last two weeks.
They have changed the game so much, no one has any way of following.
I'm just glad they got chairs finally.
Anyway, those are the two things that came to mind and I have many others, but I think it's going to be me to give them.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to say anything, if you have any thoughts. He's, he's a watcher of the process, so I respect that as well. All right. Well, unless there's any other comments or feedback at this point, I want to again say thank you to Senator and the whole team for hosting us this evening, the superintendent, Dr. Southwick and others that participated, you all who came out on a very hot day to give us your feedback and thoughts. Our goal is to hear from the public. We're going to again do this Thursday at the Randu High School, 2300 High Grove. Kevin McGee and I know very well. And so we invite you to come back out or invite your neighbors to participate. We'll be here again from 5:30 to 7:30. Ron, thank you for all the work you do on, on the board and I'll let you guys close it out.
You need to close your...
I thank you for reminding me this. Unless there are any other business before the committee, hearing that, go ahead.
We, we do have our, our business cards up here, but we're always available and I know I am very eager to talk to anyone who reaches out. So please, if you would like to give information for a follow-up, we do have assignment as well, but we want you to get information if not for this process for any other time in the future.
Yeah, so unless there's any other business before the committee, I'm assuming we'd like to adjourn. No objections, Senate Bill 190, adjourned.
Thank you all very, very much for coming and again, I encourage you to get a car if they can down or handy up here. So Ron's over here, I'm sure. They're, they're all available to talk to you about Senate Bill 190. If you have individual questions that you did not want to ask this evening, Phil Freeman can come up and visit with them now. It was scheduled at 7:30, but again, we got into assessment a little bit, border equalization a little bit. That was probably to be expected, same thing, but 54,000 appeals, you know, set, set up in the district.
Which is irregular, just that, like, to contradict or whatever's been said has been a regular process.
Yeah, it's very irregular. So again, thank you very much. Appreciate you and let's go y'all.
Well, if you do have other questions that you want to follow up with directly, let me get a business card, because that's always another opportunity to meet a person that we hope you like, you can't ask. So let me see if you have something.
I don't even, I actually don't even know what to say.
So that's me, I'm going through, they're like, basically the school board, the whole fund, so basically happens with the relevant, and then they obviously don't want to fund the money, all of it. So they go to the city and they want basically to activate them.
Oh, oh.
And those funds directly, a lot of the time, you have to run them.